I believe at the very end of the page, the first page of the minutes, it should, it should be explained how the first reading, what in ordinance progresses, just to take all. There's the next.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have second. Second by Alderman Evans. Further discussion. Roca, hold on.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Seven yes, one pass, motion passes.
You, uh, Mayor of the Court. Uh, for this, I just wanted to quickly congratulate the, uh, high school cheerleading crew for, uh, they did a great thing. There you go. We'll actually have them here at the next council meeting to formally, uh, congratulate them. The movie stars this morning on WGN. So that's pretty cool. So it's exciting to see them and they were starting. All right, uh, a couple things off on the, that's with the general order. Uh, early voting for general primary election begin the city hall and council chambers on February twenty ninth through March eleventh. It's due March eleventh, not March fourteenth. It's printed, um, between the hours nine thirty AM and three thirty PM for early primary voting. All right, next up I have Mr. Brown here. St. Juma's poster team thirty-six, DFW out of Coal City. Uh, he's got some very, uh, interesting document here to present to you guys and, uh, the story behind.
Um, I don't know if you, something, uh, I don't know if you've followed this in the paper or not, but it's gotten some publicity. Uh, early this spring, a police officer found this like a file cabinet in a closet on the second floor of what used to be the village hall, which is now the police station. What it is, is an honor roll of World War II veterans who are also members of the United Mine Workers Local eleven forty-seven. Uh, as you can see from this, and I'll bring it around so you all get a little bit closer look, there's forty names on here. Uh, of the forty names, eight of them are attributed to the city of Wilmington. Uh, one of them, Bernard Davenport, was killed in action in the Pacific during World War II. Uh, he was a resident of Custer Park, but, uh, his obituaries shows Wilmington. Uh, we've had the Coal City Library using the nineteen forty census and using the, uh, all the obituaries we could find to check all these names to make sure that, uh, they were all World War II vets. And, uh, we had, up until the other day, we had three that we hadn't absolutely identified. One of them was Ray James Lied, who was a resident of Wilmington, and Bob Widling, or rather Bill Widling, uh, Bob Widling's father, uh, found the information on him. So now we're down to two people. But we're fairly confident that these were all veterans. Now, originally, this is a homemade frame and had glass in it, but it got broken at some point in time. And, you know, it, uh, the original document was a piece of, uh, paper. And the problem is, is when they framed this, they glued it to a cardboard backer. The backer has acid in it. That's what caused a lot of the discoloration and, uh, when I bring this around, you can see the wrinkling. Uh, what we proposed to do is have the document cleaned and restored insofar as possible. It'll be reframed with museum-grade glass and acid-free matting and backing, and we'll try to get it back to as close to the original condition as we can get it. One of the problems, and I'll bring this around and you can take a look at it, is that of the forty names, there's thirteen names on here that are very indistinct. They were done at a different, all these, there was like four different times these names were added to this. And you can see they're very faint. The bottom name in the center is Robert Widling, or Mayor Bob, as most people would know, uh, who was mayor here for quite a, quite a number of years. Matter of fact, I think the street owner here is named for him. So anyway, uh, what we've done is we've solicited all the municipalities that have servicemen that are named on here. Uh, we've received donations from Coal City, Diamond, and South Wilmington. And basically what I'm here to do today is to ask you gentlemen, uh, if you'd like to donate to this project. And again, when it's done, this will be in the Coal City Library and their, uh, local history department on display with the book with it that will have, uh, the obituaries typed out of all the men that are named on here. So.
Wait, I already seen that.
Yeah, I said, yeah. Take a look at it.
Does that feel like people you're gonna approach for money or?
No, we have private contributions. We, uh, the mayor, uh, of Diamond made a private contribution. Uh, one of the city board members in, or village board members in Coal City made a donation. Um, and we had a donation from a person, uh, Emily Bates from, uh, Ohio. How she found out about this, I have no idea, but we got a check in the mail. So everybody is, uh...
How much you looking to raise?
Uh, well, we, we've solicited the municipalities for three hundred dollars apiece. The total price to get this redone is somewhere between twelve hundred and seventy-five and eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, it's going to a professional art restoration firm, and they're going to reletter all of the, the names that you can't see in the original, uh, medium, which will see, they think CP and ink. So these will, you can see they're all different colors. And this will be done, and when it's done, it will be kind of a brownish color. And of course, it'll have a new frame on it. This, this frame somebody made.
I'm not sure where you're at your tolls yet, but if you're still lacking, you may want to go to the Will Grundy Genealogy Society meeting I'm a member of, and I'm sure we could, uh, throw some cash that way.
Okay, we can do that.
I can set that up.
Uh, I, I appreciate it if you would. Leah Sharp is, uh, she's working on some of the names for us. So, yeah, and we...
Has she talked about?
Not, no, nothing about a donation, but she, we involved her.
I didn't figure it out, but I guess so.
Okay, yeah. So basically, that's what I'm here for. I'm trying to prize some money out here. And, uh, if, if I'm successful, we're gonna have this thing, uh, rejuvenated and put back as close as we can get it to what it looked like originally. Uh, as I was telling the mayor, this isn't the Declaration of Independence, but it's a, a important historical, local document. It's significant. And, uh, I, I'm just surprised it didn't get thrown away. We don't know how long it's been there.
Well, whoever hit it, hit it really well.
Yeah, it was hidden well, and like I, like I said, uh, sometimes history's right in front of us, and sometimes it's in a closet. You never know. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, from a council standpoint, you understood, I mean, legally, we just make a consensus?
My understanding is that, um, the mayor has discretionary funds that...
Correct.
Could, uh, contribute towards this. Um, so you could do that, or council want to do a more formal resolution identifying the project and, uh, you know, the sums that that could be done as well, but are you gonna ask for consensus and see that anyone has an objection to the US mayor doing that for some of your discretion?
Does anybody have any objection to that discretionary funds, three hundred dollars? Good. I'll probably make a personal contribution myself, so. We'll get that to you, Charlie.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, citizens comments. You guys have citizens comments tonight? Everybody back there, does that hurt? All right, planning and zoning. Uh, I'm on the dock, it's, uh, Project Phoenix. Uh, before we do forward with the motions, I know we have people here in relation to Project Phoenix, that they want to, Aaron, I know, Rich Port, everybody's here, if you guys want to venture a presentation.
Yeah, I think we'll have Fred Jessica speaking in moments, but, uh, thanks for having us here. So my name is Aaron Martel with Rich Development, overseeing our development activity of Richport. This is Tim Stuckley, he oversees the construction for Richport. There's a lot of great activity going on. You guys can probably see from a couple miles away the lights that are going up, um, and have illuminated the truck plaza. So that should be delivered here in the next, uh, thirty, forty-five days. And we'll have a brand-new, uh, shell station, stopping station. There's an Iron Skillet restaurant that'll be there. I know some people are looking for Dunkin' Donuts, but I think we settle on cheesesteak, uh, restaurant, or they settle on cheesesteak restaurant. So that'll be good. Um, Michelin is fully occupied and looking to expand, so they're underway with their expansion planning. So they'll be over three hundred and thirty thousand square feet. Um, Consolidated Distribution Corporation has taken their occupancy of the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand square feet of Phase One building B. They have taken occupancy of the freezer, which is a hundred and ten thousand square foot rail-serve freezer building. And they're also looking to expand within, uh, building B. We have our panels coming for Phase Two of building B, which will be a five hundred and four thousand square foot expansion. There's tremendous leasing activity so far. Be three or four users who are looking to take anywhere between four hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of the remainder of, uh, building B. There's other users that are also looking for space in the market. And, um, next door to building B, uh, we've been, uh, very lucky to have been selected by, we'll call them Project Phoenix tonight. And couldn't have been, uh, a better situation. You know, everyone from the city participated in bringing them in. We couldn't have done without you guys, so mayor and, um, Tony, you, you guys attending the meetings and setting up lunches, and it really went a long way for them to know that this was a welcome home for them in Wilmington. So thank you very much for that. The, the building is going to be a six hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot, uh, distribution center for Project Phoenix, uh, six hundred and seventy-five, six hundred and eighty. And with a potential expansion of additional three hundred thousand square feet. Uh, but this will be a trophy-quality asset that they will own themselves and, uh, will be very similar in terms of looks as, uh, building B. It won't be near, it won't be as tall, it'll be thirty-six foot clear instead of forty-foot clear, but it'll be the same sort of finishes and, um, uh, brochure-quality asset stock.
Does that potentially be rail-serve?
Yes, so there's potentially rail-serve, which will come here. Pretty tough. So the access will come up here, and the tangent will be met on the northwest side of there, so.
So this is, uh, just to give you a perspective of where we're at here, so Lorenzo Road to the north, Design Road, uh, to the far south past the expansion. So with the blow-up, you've got Lorenzo Road here, uh, so just south of Lorenzo. This is our existing building B that Aaron was just talking about, with Design Road being down here with the freezer facility and the, the tranload facility.
This is your main line, Venus Avenue.
There are some unique features. I don't know, Fred wants to talk to your Jessica, regards to how building design is for wellness health for the employees, they're also got some amenities, uh, that is unique to this project. That's what the vision of Chip Martel, when he came many times, about having amenities in the park for the employees to have, so we can, uh...
Yeah, so essentially, um, I can give you a quick overview with Tony sitting on here. Um, so with our detention requirements, we've got these large ponds that border the north and the, uh, northwest portion of the project here. So what, uh, Project Phoenix has decided that a nice feature they would like for the employees is they're gonna have an outdoor area for, for lunch, just getting some fresh air, getting out, and then they're also gonna be, um, investing to put a walking path around this entire pond. So, let me know feet-wise, I couldn't tell you, it's probably, it's probably all of it.
It's almost a third of a mile of it.
Yeah. So it's a nice feature to have for their employees.
You can see they all wear thick bits. Look at Frank.
And it, over the last, you know, ninety days, we've, we've come to, and I know these guys pretty well, they treat the employees very well, and that's sort of their approach is, I think they were discussing getting thick bits for all their employees, and, um, they're gonna have a great employee base that'll make it on Wilmington. Do you guys wanna say a couple words?
Yeah, just the fact that we're extremely excited about this opportunity. Uh, we love the area, love what we've seen, uh, the development that, uh, we've just put together, and, uh, we're, you know, we're ready, go, hold to get started.
Thanks, Charlie. And just so you guys know, these guys have done their homework. They, they, they've traveled Wilmington, they've been each corner of Wilmington, they've been in the restaurants. Uh, so they really, even before they made their decision, they really wanted to get to know what Wilmington was about, which I thought was ridiculous if they took the time to do that.
They are an existing, uh, operation, they've been in existence since, what, nineteen sixty? Thirty-seven years. Thirty-seven years, so. A privately held company, uh, and a lot of the extras that they explained about the planning commission, um, they even have a fifteen percent, uh, profit sharing from their employees. And as Jessica said, this is really, really a high-tech operation. Uh, so this building, when, when Aaron uses the word, this is a trophy piece, uh, it truly is. It's gonna, and it's right at our, right at Lorenzo Road. So it'll set the tone for, as we all knew it, this is gonna be the food process scenario off the rail. And what a great, what a great building to have come in here and a company, uh, that's, that's here. They have a lot of, a lot of ideas, um, that they wanna help participate in the community, become involved in our community. So they'll be able to make the announcement who the company is, uh, shortly.
All right, any questions from the council of these guys, or ahead?
When you open the break ground? When you open the break ground?
Uh, as soon as possible. I mean, as soon as possible. We have, we have plans, we really do have plans to, uh, part of this building is gonna be to service one of our largest suppliers, and I really, my fourth quarter of this year would love to see them operating at least a portion of that building. So, uh, so Aaron has his work cut out for him because he's gotta promise me November first.
Whether it'll cooperate, you get the bad bill and get...
It's supposed to be fifty degrees this weekend. There you go.
Aaron's gonna be out there pouring water.
We've, we've learned El Nino is not a bad thing.
And for background, we've tried a commission and no problem, we unanimously approved preliminary plan, the final plan, and the site plan.
All right, so generally, get the preliminary plan.
As recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, I move to approve the preliminary and final plan as submitted by Rachel's, uh, Justice Center. Phase Five, four properties, comprising of sixty point one-three-six acres, more or less generally located just east of BNSF railroad, south of Lorenzo Road, and north of Design Road.
Motion by Alderman Persick, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Evans. Roca, hold on.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the final site plan as submitted and applied with engineering for the proposed site compromising the forty-two acres, more or less generally located just east of the BNSF railroad, south of Lorenzo Road, and north of Design Road, as known as Project Phoenix, as approved and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their February eleventh, twenty sixteen meeting.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roca, hold on.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes. Thank you so much.
All right, we've got the next one on the table.
I move to approve ordinance number sixteen dash zero-two dash sixteen dash zero-four, ordinance amending chapter one hundred and fifty point one-nine of the City of Wilmington Code of Law.
Motion by Kirby Hall, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? Roca, hold on.
Alderman, uh, Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
No.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Seven yes and one no, motion passes.
Thank you. All right, uh, Planning and Zoning's next scheduled meeting is for Thursday, March third, twenty sixteen, at five o'clock. Uh, committee reports, public grounds, parks, health, and safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Evans.
Mr. Mayor, uh, very rare committee meeting, it was suggested to bring to full council, uh, the rules that we would like to implement for our city parks, the rules and regulations for park property use. There was some discussion, and, uh, members of the committee wanted the entire council to work it through.
Basically, you're looking for requests, basically, I read, requests for anything in full council input regarding, uh, drivers for the next meeting, which is, I think that
there was also, um, discussion, not only to review the rules, but, uh, whether, whether we would want to post them at the parks. And if the rules were posted at the parks, how are we going to enforce the rules? So, uh, the full council was asked to be involved in this decision.
And it's gonna be mayor's, uh, what is the marcha at night there?
All right, what, what comment on the rules are going to be seen from the public in regards to, or I think, uh, Alderman Persick brought this up. Should we have a rule about, um, any digging for artifacts on our, on the property? We have had, uh, some people exploring our, our parks and actually, uh, do a little bit erosion, uh, problems because of where they're exploring, and they dig up the, uh, the dirt along the bank area. So it might be something for us to think about.
Yes, I think we can do in a planning session. Sure.
Isn't she okay?
Yes, sir.
I don't think it's a problem.
No, it's not.
I couldn't find it, so. Just a little kids will show.
I hope this, the, uh, all the KDK parks down that way is where they've all got no muddle detecting sign, right?
Yeah.
It might be a symbol of what she says.
There's been certain rules in, I think, those, those, John's being, of course.
Yeah.
All right, Water Source Streets and Alice County, Alderman Kerwin?
Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, March ninth, two thousand sixteen, six p.m.
Uh, let's see, place it as, uh, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand sixteen, five thirty.
Might as well, administration land acquisition, uh, please strike items five, six, and seven in relation to, uh, Alderman Studer, Alderman Studer.
I move to approve the account payable report in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and forty-nine cents, and the January twenty sixteen collector's report in the amount of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents, as presented by the city accountant.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Roca, hold on.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve ordinance number sixteen dash zero-two dash sixteen dash zero-two, and ordinance establishing cost reimbursements for contractual police services including hazardous material responses.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Roca, hold on.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
No.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passes.
I move to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero-four. Okay, a resolution determining the twenty sixteen hourly police officer reimbursement clause for contractual police services.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Roca, hold on.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
No.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passes.
I move to approve Dan's Associates Incorporated proposal for assessment and con, excuse me, concept development of a KDK murder deal in the amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Roca, hold on.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
No.
Alderman, uh, Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman, um, Persick?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passes.
Okay, but we're down to eight, right? Okay, move to approve the real estate contract with MKM Oil Incorporated by way of ordinance number sixteen dash zero-two, sixteen dash zero-three, an ordinance for the purchase of real estate located in the southeast corner of Wilmington, Deaton Road and Route Fifty Three, Wilmington.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kirby, any discussion? Roca, hold on.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, six p.m.
Orders like, maybe Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve ordinance number sixteen dash zero-two, sixteen dash zero-one, ordinance adding to page, uh, chapter ninety-six, uh, Wilmington, ordinance standing established for...
Motion by Alderman Evans, do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion?
Uh, possibly for background information, uh, the mayor was at the chamber meeting and there was no comments when he brought up on the site.
All right, Roca, hold on, please.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Studer?
Yes.
Uh, eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand sixteen, six p.m.
Personnel, Michael Clark, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick, nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor, do you, city manager, parts of the grant?
Yeah, we, uh, we are scheduling our management training regards to the personnel policy draft, so we'll, we'll have that next Monday with all the department heads, uh, the overall new regulations for ELC, uh, Department of Labor Wage Hour Act. Uh, so the attorneys will be out here, uh, working with our, uh, department head and
and Hers staff, as we said, um, there is a, one of the things that we did talk about, which, um, we're gonna be bringing up on the WSA, is, and we did ask a lot of questions about how our water plant, um, operates in regards to surface water application. So what I did offer up to the, uh, the congressman's staff people is to offer up our plant if anyone wants to come down for a tour, because, um, we, we are one of the, you know, Class A, you know, plants in the state, uh, has been improved with a high quality, and we do do all the, uh, provisions that will not probably have any type of, uh, you know, leach in, in regards to their pipes, because we do have lead pipes in, in our community, you know, at your homes and all that. The, uh, superintendent assures us, along with all the water operators, uh, we've been doing a review that, uh, there's, you know, our water plant and the process that we use, uh, there's no possibility, and I will say to the public that we have any type of, you know, lead problems at all, and all our water tests come back, you know, very, very good, uh, landwork, um, that's out in the community. So, uh, if, if there is any, um, interest, if you, if you're people on the community, um, maybe the one thing you might wanna do in, in the, um, late spring or summer is maybe do an open house with our water plant, and it might, right the public end, they'll learn about our water plant, so, uh, 'cause water is, you know, the breath of life, and